January 2, 2024, meeting of the Harris Township Board of Supervisors to order. First thing on the agenda is we're going to stand and do the pleas of allegiance.
I'm glad to be here. United States of America, it's a republic for which it stands, one nation, oh my God, individual with a reason, justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda tonight, we're going to have the swearing in of our two most recently elected officials. Nigel, I think you're going to go first, and then Tracy, our newbie, will go second.
You got to take pictures for the site?
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Nigel, could you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear that you will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and that you will discharge the duties of supervisor in Harris Township, center county, with fidelity?
I do.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and that you will discharge the duties of supervisor in Harris Township, center county, with fidelity? Congratulations, thank you.
All right, okay. Thank you. Okay, we're going to do a few housekeeping things here, and then we'll organize the board. First off is I have approval of the minutes from December 11, 2023, public hearing, and a December 11, 2023, regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Make your first motion.
I need to approve the minutes of the December 11, 2023, public hearing and the December 11, 2023, regular meeting.
That would be nice, but I don't think she can do that because she wasn't a supervisor at that point.
Oh, that's true.
It would have to be Danny.
I can second, though.
Danny, Danny or Nigel?
Sorry about that.
All right, so Danny, you're making that motion. So Danny's going to make the motion, Nigel's going to second it. Okay, now, we'll make it. So, any additions, subtractions, anything changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. Members of the public are invited to comment on any items not on the agenda, five minutes per person, timely, please. Comments relating to specific items on the agenda should be deferred until that point in the meeting. Do we have any in the audience? What about online, Mark? We have anybody online that want any citizens' comments?
Nope, I don't see anyone.
Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on to the new agenda items. We do have one addition on the agenda, it is non-fiduciary, there's no monies to be done, it basically is something we did earlier in the fall, and we just never officially did it, was the extension of the paving of our parking lot out back here, the contract, we need to extend that to the spring, and we talked about it and approved it, we never did it officially. So, in front of you, you do have the change order, which is what we're going to approve tonight, we've already approved that we were going to do it, we're just doing the change order, so I just need a motion on who's going to approve this change order.
Are we adding it to the agenda?
Oh, I thought we could just do it.
No, I think you need to add it to the agenda.
Okay, all right, let's add it to the agenda, we'll put it on, when do you want to put it on?
You tell them you need to do that by vote, to add it to the agenda.
I know that. When do you want to do it, at the end? When do you want to do it, at the end?
I'll make a motion so we add it to the end of the last time.
All right, so we're going to do it after the resolution for fee schedule.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Danny, second by Nigel, any objections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that is added to the agenda. Okay, final thing I get to do, we're going to start, oh, is there any other new business, any other new items? Okay, hearing none, and the next thing is township business. Organization of the Board of Supervisors. Board members shall nominate and elect a chair and vice chair for the calendar year 2024, and then that little thing about what I'm doing here, but anyway, we need to do that, I believe, Tracy? You might be able to make this one. Do you know who's coming and going?
I, yeah, I think, but I moved to nominate Nigel as the chair and Danny as the vice chair, serving the calendar year 2024, Board of Supervisors.
Bruce, can you second that?
I second that, yes.
Okay, we got a, we got a motion by Tracy and a second by Bruce to elect Nigel as chair and Dennis as vice chair. Any other nominations? Any other, any objections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. I stand relieved. Yep, I'm officially booted.
Okay, first item I preside over is the interview with prospective members of the ABCs, so I noticed Ryland, online, I'm not sure how you pronounce that last name, if it's soft G's or, but anyway, is interested in serving on the Planning Commission, Parks and Recreation Committee, or the Zoning Hearing Board. So, you, is Ryland on, ready to take questions, or tell us a little bit about yourself?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, can you hear?
Yes, yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Cool, cool, the audio's going a little bit in and out on my end, but, yeah, my name is Ryland Bogus, I was in Bollesburg since 2001, on and off, I've lived in some other places, Wilmington, North Carolina, Silver Spring, Maryland, moved back here about six years ago, and recently started a career in real estate in the last two years. Since doing that, just kind of opened my eyes to all the inner workings of zoning and planning and all that kind of stuff, so I'd really like to explore more about, you know, what I can do to volunteer and to contribute to a place that I call home, and Bollesburg in general, I love the area, and, yeah, I'd just like to learn what I can do in my, that's kind of, you know, my story, and if you'd like to know a little bit more about me, again, I graduated State High in 2011, had stayed, loved doing things, outdoors, skiing, hiking, I've got a 12-year-old Australian shepherd, but, yeah, other than that, I'd love to meet some of you guys in person, and I look forward to seeing what part I can play.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Ryland?
Yeah, I have one, Mr. Bogus, you have Planning Commission, Parks and Rec, Advisory, Rental Housing Boards, and Zoning Hearing Boards, do you have a preference on which one you like the most, or maybe your top two?
My top two, I mean, I guess Planning Commission and the Zoning Board, I'd definitely be interested in those, but again, you know, this is my first time ever doing anything like this, I've done, you know, other volunteer work in other capacity, but nothing like this, so, you know, this is kind of my first step into contributing, you know, on this kind of level, and so, again, I'm just looking forward to seeing, you know, where I can do the most good, I'm looking forward to learning, so if any of those, you know, sound like a good fit, I'm happy to consider anything, but, yeah, zoning and the Planning Commission are definitely interesting to me.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly, sure.
Can I ask a question? Yeah. Hi, I'm Diane Farr, and I'm delighted to hear that you're interested in the Park and Rec, which I'm a member of. I was just wondering, what park do you typically, you know, spend time in, possibly all the parks? Do you possibly have any children? We're just looking to supplement the, what we're missing from our board. Right now, we don't have anyone that has young children.
Sure, so I do not have children, I'd say the park that I go to the most is Nittany View, which is right by my house.
Good.
I've lived there, again, or my dad, I should say, has lived there since 2001, so, I mean, we used to watch the fireworks there when I was a kid, I still take my dog there, you know, multiple times a week to go for runs around the gravel track. I don't really go to many of the other parks in Bollesburg, just because that one's so local to me, but, you know, again, I've lived in Bollesburg since 2001, when I was eight, so I've definitely done my fair share of running around the parks. Yeah, I don't have any kids, but I definitely care about the outdoors, like I said, I'm really into skiing and hiking Rothrock and all that kind of stuff, so, yeah, I'm definitely down to help in whatever capacity I can.
Excellent, I'm, a dog definitely gives you credibility.
Right, got to mention it.
Thanks, we're happy that you want to join us as a possibility.
Awesome, thanks for the questions.
Anybody else have any questions for Ryland? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on, thank you, Ryland.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, guys.
We will be convening to an executive session later to discuss possibilities of who will appoint to what, so, you can, and then we'll reconvene and announce our choices, so, you don't have to hang on, we'll let you know.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate everybody's time.
All right, thank you. Okay, next in order, we have Jeffrey Fredericks, who's interested in serving on the Planning Commission. So, Jeff, you want to step up to the mic and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Should you put it lower or kind of reach to the?
It's fine like that.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
My name's Jeff Fredericks, and I've lived in Bollesburg all my life, and I actually know everyone here in Harris Township, I actually know...
Tracy?
Yes, I know, I know, I know Danny, I know Nigel, and I've gotten to know Tracy since she just got elected to the Supervising Board, and I've watched all the meetings religiously, I watched all the COG budget meetings, all the Harris Township budget meetings, I've actually watched Mark Volko in every meeting, Half Moon, Patton, when he was filling in for the regional planning, and what I would be interested in helping out with is just to get, just to get, just to sit down, you know, with ideas, you know, how to, you know, with, for the residents, where would residents like growth, where would they like farm and agriculture, and also, I think the most important thing that we need in Harris Township right now is more affordable housing, because with the, the land, the land cost and the cost for housing in this area, a lot of people that live out of the area, they can't afford to live in this area, so I think we need more affordable housing in this area, and I think we need to look at more affordable housing in Harris Township, like if a new development comes in, they should have, a certain amount of it should be affordable housing in this area. But I would love to help you guys, I mean, I would like to help the Planning Commission out with ideas, I've, I mean, Ken Baker goes to our church, so I would like to actually help you guys with ideas and how to approve Harris Township, because, like I said, I love Harris Township, I've lived in Bollesburg all my life, you know, and I, if I could serve in any way...
Okay, well, thanks, any, any board members have a question for Jeff? Anybody in the public? Okay, well, it's interesting, I run into Jeff every now and then, and he always seems up to date on, on what's going on, as he says, he watches all the meetings, and CNET junkie, we'll call him. Anyway, well, thank you very much for your interest, Jeff.
You're welcome.
We'll get back to you. Okay, is Peter Irish present? Okay. And Peter's interested in serving on the Planning Commission or Shade Tree Commission?
That's right, Peter Irish, moved here in 19, I'm sorry, in 2015, 2019, from San Francisco, via Salzburg, Frankfurt, Munich, Vienna, Prague, I was 24 years over in Europe doing all kinds of things for Unilever and Procter &amp; Gamble and people like that. The craziest thing was probably privatizing a chicken combine out in northern Moravia from the Czechoslovak government in 1992. A lot of that's not going to be terribly relevant here, I realize.
Never know, we have, we have some wild chickens.
Well, chickens could be pretty relevant. Anyway, the point is, I haven't been local in a very long time, and so I'm going to, I'd like to experiment with being local, as far as what I do around here, I'm just retiring from a CEO job at my company after six years, I'm now just the chairman, I have time to do other things. I'm a carpenter, I love gardening, I have a number of animals, including two horses, too many chickens, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah, that's a little bit on me, and my interests are probably either horticultural, that's why I'm talking about the shade tree, but also the planning, the zoning, particularly the zoning, because it would be nice to see, from my perspective, the town retain a certain amount of its village aspect, so, any questions for me?
Is it one West Pine, you have two horses?
Well, I don't keep them here.
Oh. That caught my attention, so.
They're very small, no. So that's, any questions for me?
Well, well traveled.
Indeed, indeed.
How many languages do you speak?
I speak German and English.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
No, can it?
Could German anybody have mastered?
Yeah, just didn't, anyway, I don't have much use for it around here, frankly.
Oh, you go out and speak to the Pennsylvania Dutch, I know, there's a little different, but...
That's middle high German, actually.
Yeah.
It's also possible, but I did, actually, I went to Penn State, I didn't even mention that, graduated in German in '82, well, that's why I was over in Europe.
A degree in German.
Yeah, I have a master's in German literature, which is pretty useless.
How'd you get from German, how'd you get from German literature to business CEO?
Oh, well, amusement parks, advertising, food manufacturing, hygiene products, POS, business coaching, and recently executive service, executive recruiting, so I've been in seven different industries over the years, I would say I'm more of a Swiss Army knife than anything else.
All right.
Any questions?
Anybody else have any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Peter, for your interest. Okay, and the last one we have on the list is Peggy Johnson. And Peggy's interested in serving on the Planning Commission or Zoning Hearing Board.
Yeah, good evening, so I am Peggy Johnson, I've been here in the State College area for about 27 years, and nine of it now in Bollesburg, so I moved here nine years ago to Academy Street, and I find that, that this Bollesburg area has so much character, and I see what happens, is happening in some of the other townships, and, you know, everybody has a lot of pressures on them, all the townships have a lot of pressures for, for growth and development and so forth, and, and I think it takes a careful eye to the planning to make sure that it grows in a, in a way that everybody is happy with. So we want to keep that quaint character, like the village character of this place, I think is really important. I do a lot of hiking here, I'm in the forest a lot, I have, also have a dog, you know, so we play in the parks and the, and the area a lot, and I walk almost every day, probably most people know my dog better than me, but we walk miles and miles every day, so we, you know, we've kind of gotten, my dog and I have gotten to know the, the area in, in that sort of a way really well. I was a civil engineering professor at Penn State, and I retired about two and a half years ago, and so hopefully a little bit of the expertise I had then could carry over to the Planning Commission, but mostly I think it's my interest in being part of a really, you know... Commission, but mostly, I think it's my interest in being part of really, you know, part of the community and helping to create and maintain what we have here.
Tell me about the Master Watershed Program. Master, yeah, the steward program?
Yeah, oh, yeah. I am, I'm in this, the Penn State Extension started this program called the Master Watershed Steward Program, and so, I just joined that last year. So, you go through some training and so forth and join that. And the idea is that there are these programs, very much like Master Gardeners, all over the state. And the idea is they help with, or we help with, any projects that townships, or communities, or counties, any, you know, whoever has to help educate, to help create, to help maintain, you know, all sorts of different waterways and watershed projects.
I chaired the Watershed Commission for 19 years, so.
Oh, okay.
Know something about the watershed. It's intriguing to match that with a civil engineer. It's a nice match. Are you into hydrology?
Yeah, my expertise was in water resources.
Hydrology, okay. Good.
Do you run the OLE Curriculum Committee?
Yes.
Any chance of bringing back toll painting?
Oh, I don't know. Sure, I mean, if somebody will teach it.
We love that.
It's, you know, we.
It's been a number of years.
What she's talking about is the, I'm the co-chair on the OLE Curriculum Committee, and our whole job is to just get people to teach classes. And so, I teach a few myself, you know, because I still love teaching.
I think you do a wonderful job.
Thank you. So, we're always looking for, so if anybody wants to teach an OLE class, just let me know.
Does OLE do anything on watershed stewardship?
That's a great question. I don't, we've got some people coming in this next time to teach some about habitat creation in your yard, you know, to turn some of your yard into, from lawn to birds and bees, you know, something attractive, birds and bees, but beyond that, to my knowledge, we haven't. I've only been on the committee for this past year, so.
You should be in touch with Bob Ague, who represents Harris Township on the commission, because there may be some match between the.
Maybe.
Between your engineering interests and the Watershed Commission.
Yeah.
Good.
That'd be great.
Anybody else have any questions? I just have, so with your, the Master Watershed Steward, my wife is, she's not active now. Years ago, when she had time, she was a master gardener.
Yeah.
And so, you have to commit so many hours to stay active?
Yes.
On volunteer project?
We have so many hours of continuing ed, just to make sure we're all keeping up with, you know, Penn State Extension courses, or, you know, all sorts of different things. And then, we also have a commitment to volunteer hours, but it's about 20 a year. It's not.
Yeah, I know. I remember that. It's not a lot.
Yeah.
Hers, too. So, it's probably similar framework.
I think it's a very similar framework. My sister's also a master gardener, so we compare notes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? For Peggy? Audience? Well, thank you for your interest in serving, Peggy. We'll get back to you.
South Academy.
You can stick around, or you can take off. It's up to you.
She lives next to you, don't I ask you? For address to South Academy.
We know each other.
Are you neighbors or something?
Way, way up.
Oh, should be Upper South Academy.
I'm Upper South Academy.
I know I'm supposed to get up there and say, but I think there's outstanding group of candidates.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. We'll be in touch.
Okay. Great piece of the paper in front of me. Okay, next on the agenda is an intermunicipal agreement with College Township for shared brush storage and disposal. And for many years, brush collection by the township, maintenance department during biannual brush collection, was disposed at the university area joint authorities facility for use in their composting operations. Beginning in 2024, the UAJA will no longer be accepting brush from municipalities as they move towards shutting down composting operations to construct a proposed bio solids project. The township currently conducts brush collection twice a year, spring and fall, with each collection period resulting in 50 or more dump truck loads of material. Due to the volume of brush collected each year, the township lacks a suitable location to store the material prior to disposal. As UAJA's decision has impacted multiple municipalities, College Township was able to secure a lease for property on Stewart Drive that can be used for brush storage. Brush stored on the site would be processed, that is grinded, once a year. College Township is offering to enter an intermunicipal agreement with township to equally share in the cost of the property lease and brush processing cost. The lease would cost $12,000 annually, and processing costs are estimated at $2,000 annually. That's $12,000 for us. And now, one thing, I talked to Mark about this, because I wondered the 50-50 split. I just wanted to relay that we actually produce as much brush a year, or maybe even more, than College Township does, because we have much more canopy than they do. So, even though it's a larger municipality, the equal share seems reasonable. There's a discussion item or a recommended motion to execute the agreement?
Make the motion for discussion purposes.
And I'll second it. I have one question.
Raise yours, I'll raise mine then.
I have one question here, and I think you answered it, but that $12,000 is our share, correct? And that's the same with the $2,000 is our share.
Correct.
Okay. And that could be higher, if we have more than, in other words, if they have to come in and grind it up more than two or three times, we might pay a little more there, correct?
The plan is to only have it ground once a year. I think the site is large enough to handle an entire year's worth of brush collection.
Really?
And they'll bring in this outside company to do the grinding, and they will haul it away, which is actually cheaper than if we were to retain the.
One acre is going to handle 50, 100, that'd be 100-plus truckloads for us.
200, 200 truckloads in total. They believe they can store that much on that site.
Okay.
But, yeah, the plan would be to do that once a year, and we would be paying half the cost. If they, if the college township determines they want to retain any of that mulch, they're going to pay for whatever the difference is to retain mulch for their use, if they decide they want to do that.
And do we have that same option with the mulch?
We do. I just, for us to take and go over there and pick up the mulch and bring it back here is probably.
You never know when you might need some mulch.
That's true.
The option, if we don't enter into this contract, is what?
We don't have a place to store 50 or 100 dump truck loads of brush right now, so I don't know what our option would be, other than to not conduct brush collection.
Did we ever get a number back from down there on that piece of land?
We did, and that's going to be part of your exec session, is to talk about that later. But I will point out that the budget, during our budget discussion, we did talk about having these costs, and we did budget $14,000 this year in anticipation of this contract. So, it wasn't, included in the budget is something we.
And the alternative to going to the Hallbacher site is even more expensive.
Yes. My underst, I have not priced it out. I know College Township did, and that's why they chose to go this route, because it was significantly more expensive.
It'll give us a year to play with the idea and see what works.
And I'm saying, from what I'm looking, we have an annual, we can annually.
Yes.
Do, up this. And if we just decided to buy a piece of ground, it's going to take us a year before it's going to be ready for us to use it, till we get through all the sales agreements and, you know, the funding and all that good stuff. So, all right. I got my answer.
I have my answer.
Do you understand what we're talking about?
Okay. Any other comments? Any more discussion on this item? Bruce? Nope? Okay. Anybody in the audience?
They left. Oh, Diane's there. Sorry, Diane didn't see you over there.
Okay. Well, we're ready to take a vote then, so all in favor of approving this agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, next item is emergency paid sick leave policy. That's referring to the COVID. And as of January 3, 2022, meeting, the Board of Supervisors voted to extend the township's emergency paid sick leave policy for an indefinite period until further review is deemed necessary. At that time, there was an uptick in COVID cases with the state and federal health agencies encouraging masking and other protocols to safeguard the public. While the COVID virus is still present in the community, the protocols and eligibility encompassed within the policy are outdated. Current CDC isolation guidelines for individuals with COVID or those in close contact with someone with the virus have changed significantly in the last two years, with staff being able to remain at work or return to work more quickly if diagnosed. Township manager recommends that the township discontinue the emergency paid sick leave policy for COVID, allowing staff to utilize accrued sick leave in the event of an illness. If the board is interested in continuing the policy, it should be updated to reference CDC guidelines.
We're discussing this?
We're discussing this.
I'm trying to remember. When we put this in, it was a temporary thing. I didn't think we were putting it in forever. It was, you know, something that we had to do to, for COVID and having that. So, I think we took care of our employees, but at this point, I kind of have to agree that with the treatments and everything, you know, you're not, you're not having that four, five, two-week, whatever it was, off work. So, I would be in favor of doing that. You know, if we do that, then that relieved staff of having to do all the work to update up the CDC and have to come back and redo the policy. I mean, I, that's what I feel about. I mean, I don't, unless, I can't see any hardship from our employees at this point, you know? If something comes up, we can always reiterate it. I mean, we can always put it back in.
Was it never used, by anybody?
I think it was used a few times. I don't know that anybody ever had to necessarily take enough leave that they would have exhausted their own. That was partially why this was in place, in case somebody had to take off for a month or two, because of constant close contacts. But I think it's been utilized, but not necessarily to the fullest that it could have been.
It could end up being a burden on management to take care of it.
Yeah, right now, it still refers back to those old policies, so if someone's in a close contact situation, they're supposed to take off for two weeks, according to our policy, but CDC says just wear a mask if you've been close contacted. So, it's really out of date with what current policy is and really could result in issues down the line.
What, do you feel that we should have a policy, or would you be comfortable if we said, okay, let's just, we'll just get rid of this and not worry about it? Or would you be, would you rather have us updated to the current standard? What would you like?
I would rather just have the policy repealed and done away with for now, as was stated, you can always re, you know, if we have a situation again that arises similar to this, you could always reinstate a policy. But with what we're seeing in terms of timelines to come back to work, it's similar to any other virus when you're sick, you know, five to six, seven days, somewhere in there. And we have a pretty generous sick leave policy as it is, so it should be enough to help cover someone should they get sick.
Do we need a motion to abandon it? Was it a policy without a motion? I would.
Well, I think you would need to at least make a motion to discontinue the policy, because you enacted the policy and you extended it back in January of '22. So, I think you'd want to.
Through a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion to get rid of the emergency paid sick COVID leave policy.
I'll second that.
Okay, good. They could come in.
Any more discussion on that item? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Next, closed captioning for CNET programs. CNET will be offering an optional closed captioning service for programs viewed online on demand, beginning sometime in the first quarter of this year. The closed captioning would not be available on the televised programs, only those viewed on demand through their website or through a streaming device such as Roku or Amazon Fire. Currently, CNET programming is available through YouTube as closed captioned, but is automated and therefore not as accurate as will be provided through this service. So, this optional service will cost $17 per hour of captioning. Based upon our 2023 televised meeting hours, which includes both Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission meetings, this service is estimated to add an additional $700 to our annual contribution to CNET.
Did this emerge at the center of regional management level?
It did not. This was something that was sent to us recently by CNET, and the managers haven't discussed it yet.
Is it spinning off from the Belfont ADA?
I don't believe it's spinning off directly from that, but it certainly is coming at a time when the Belfont ADA decision was handed down. I don't know there's a direct correlation. I didn't have that discussion with Cindy Hahn about that.
I'm wondering if, in fact, this is adequate with respect to what we could be encountering with ADA, because if it was a Belfont, it probably emerged here.
I don't know this would be adequate, because this would be for someone to be able to watch a meeting after the fact and not participate in the meeting while it's occurring. And I understand that's what happened with Belfont, was someone wanted to participate in the meeting or have an interpreter present, so they could understand what was happening in real time. And this is all after the fact, after the meeting's already been broadcast.
Do we know? Is there demand for this in Harris Township? I don't know. Is there demand for this in Harris Township? I mean, because you're looking at on a Roku or an Amazon Fire. So, it would be a secondary showing. I'm just, I'm just wondering if.
We get our annual numbers every year from CNET on online viewership, and I know we have quite a number of people watch them online. I don't know how many of those individuals would prefer to have closed captioning as an option. I really just don't have an answer on what the demand might be. But it is something, at least it provides additional accessibility for folks that want to, you know, at least view a meeting. They can do so with closed captioning as an option.
From a financial perspective, our contribution to CNET comes from the Comcast.
Cable fees.
Cable fee, franchise, which is $120,000 something?
Yeah, and this wouldn't certainly push you over that.
Our payment to CNET's about $17,000, $18,000?
It was $22,000 this year, I believe, yeah.
So, it's not a major addition.
No.
To what they're doing now.
I just wish we knew the need and the desire and the want and the part of making a decision, but I don't know if you're ever going to know that right now.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, see, I can, I go hot and cold on this. You know, the hot side says it's $700. What's the deal? But then, the cold side says, how many people are really watching it that way? I mean, I don't know what the demand is, and who knows? It might be one of those things where you put it on and the demand goes up. But I just run hot and cold, so I guess I'm kind of neutral in either direction, which way we go here. I don't.
Bruce has a hand up on him.
Oh, Bruce.
Okay, Bruce?
Yeah, hi. As someone who's sitting here participating in an online, listening to the meeting, sometimes the voices are garbled and it's hard to hear exactly what's being said. And I think for $700, if we can get an accurate transcript on our recordings, it would be useful for people, because, again, sometimes it's not as clear listening to it as would be desirable.
To me, it's a proactive kind of issue, so.
But it's kind of disappointing. I don't want to do it on, they won't do it on the actual televised programs, the few that are televised every week. And so, I'm not sure why that would be, that they can't do that, too, or how much that would be.
Certainly something we can always bring up to them to see if they're exploring that as an option.
I would, I would think that some people that might be interested and don't hear well may not have the technology capability to even use the online option. So, it's sort of like, you know, doing something, but not enough.
Maybe they don't have the equipment to do it.
Well, I'm not saying live, but on the televised.
Right, that's the plan.
We're live, but if they can put it online, why can't they put it on their programs that they broadcast a few times after our meetings?
Can you talk to the managers about this, or can see if anyone else is playing with that idea, whether they're going to be interested right now?
Yeah, we can certainly, I can certainly discuss that.
Have they talked about it at all?
We have not yet. We were going to be talking about it at this month's meeting, but I believe that our meeting will be occurring between now and when the CNET had asked for a response by, I believe but I believe that our meeting will be occurring between now and when, um, the CNET had asked for a response by, I believe they want a response by January.
They want it by the fifteenth.
Fifteenth this month.
Well, I think.
But we were mostly going to be discussing the Belfont issue and how that may impact us, not so much the, the closed captioning proposal.
I think we could graciously extend that January fifteenth date and tell, tell CNET that we want more information on it.
Well, I, I have a suggestion. I mean, again, I, I, to Bruce's point, it's, it's seven hundred dollars. I think that we could, we could tentatively say, okay, we're ready to go with the seven hundred, but we have other concerns. And live TV and the live one would be what, what that concern would be, and we could always revisit it. But, but I think, I don't know that we have to commit to the seven hundred, but I think we should send them a letter that says, cause all it says is that if you're, uh, if the organization would like to take advantage of optional caption, just send them, we're interested. We would like to take advantage, but we have questions.
And she has my name in, uh, as the example down there. Tussi Hammeister and Pendett, so I'm not sure how I, how I worked into that discussion.
I think that when YouTube puts your name in there, it probably does not say Hammeister. Who knows what? It comes in as under closed captioning.
But I think, yeah, I think we need, and we're meeting again, what, on the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, okay. We could always do it there.
We could do it, yeah.
Okay, I can certainly let Cindy know that and see if she can provide any more, more information about televised playback.
We have a consensus on that idea? I don't think we need to do a motion, just.
No.
No, we don't do a motion, probably approve it. I'm gonna have to watch this to see how my pronunciation goes out.
You have to watch it on YouTube.
Yep. Now, do they, is YouTube live when they put it on? Do they put it on live?
Yeah, I believe it's YouTube is live, yes.
So like, somebody could be watching YouTube right now.
Somebody could be watching it now, I believe, and seeing it.
Online.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, folks. Uh, next is our electricity supplier contract renewal. The township's current electricity supplier contract with direct energy will expire in March. The township is currently paying, um, point nine, yeah, nine point five eight six cents, um, per kilowatt hour. So our electricity, our electricity broker, Premier Power Solutions, has been shopping for price contracts that are between twelve and thirty-six months in length. The per K wattage rate is higher for long-term, longer-term contracts, which may indicate that power suppliers are anticipating an increase in prices. Pricing will need to be refreshed by our broker before we can enter a new contract with prices around seven cents per kilowatt hour, um, in mid-December. The solar power purchasing agreement, um, working group anticipates beginning their review of the SPPA contract in January in anticipation of the document review proceeding without further delay. Some partners have opted to enter a twelve-month electric, electricity contract to allow them to enter into SPPA in mid-2025. Shorter-term electricity contract can be sought if additional time is necessary to finalize the SPPA process. The SPPA working group intends to offer educational workshops this winter to help inform the partners of the history of the project and future steps. So we should discuss length of contract for our next electricity supplier contract. Um, and bearing in mind the contract, the, the work on the SPPA.
I would take nothing longer than a year.
I, I have, I have concerns here with that. I, you know, we've been told all along that until we sign this purchase agreement, that they aren't gonna, they aren't gonna be able to put their facility into it, and that could take us up to two years. So, so I, I mean, we're talking, they said mid-2025. We're eighteen months away right now. When's our, when's our contract up, Mark?
It's gonna be the end of February, so really it's our March meter read is when it'll be.
So, so we could eat, we could feasibly do eighteen months and still probably be well within the, the, the solar power purchasing agreement, and we wouldn't have to do this again until hopefully that happens. But I'm, I'm still a little concerned about that whole situation. So I, I haven't seen anything there that's, that's made me go jump up and down and scream and yell a lot.
The final site for the, for the solar project has still happened finally.
I know, and that's what I said. I, I think we're still a good eighteen months to two years away, so I wouldn't be uncomfortable with an eighteen month.
I already agreed that eighteen, yeah. What other municipalities doing, like you said, twelve months, any of them, any of them doing something longer than that?
Uh, I haven't heard from all of them, but the ones that I had talked to said they were, were looking at twelve months. Um, and then they were gonna do shorter period contracts, cause you can always price out a three-month contract or what have you. If you know you're gonna be entering into the SPPA, you know, if that's their anticipation to do so, if it's only another three or four months after their contract runs out, they can just negotiate for a shorter term.
SPPA will not be ready in a year.
I, I know that. I, I, I have a question for you to, to ask when we, when we get this.
Sure.
You know, not only do the eighteen months, but just do the regular one like we normally do. But get us a number of solar. If, if we went a hundred percent solar, green, let, let's say non-green grass, green energy. If we did a hundred percent green energy with our contract, what would the number be? And if it's just as good as what we're gonna get in the solar power purchase agreement, only having to lock in for eighteen months, I'd be more, I'd climb to do that than locking in for fifteen years.
I will say.
No, there is actually supplier green energy.
Right.
And they're, they're offering good prices right now.
That's right. That, that's why I'm saying that, you know? We might be able to do just as good on our own than having to lock ourselves in for fifteen years.
I will say that right now, the, uh, prices that I got in mid-December for an eighteen-month contract were right around what the SPPA was anticipating our contract would be, which is right around, well, just under seven cents a kilowatt hour. Anything over that was over what the SPPA was estimating, any longer-term contracts. So if we were to go twenty-four months, for example, it was well over seven cents a kilowatt hour. But my point being, if I do price it at eighteen months, eighteen months with renewable, I anticipate the renewable would be higher, but I, I would just need clarification from the board if you're interested in entering into that renewable one, or if you want me to just go with the lowest price of the two.
How, how fast could you bring it back to us?
Well, here's the problem. When I get a price quote from them, we have about twenty-four hours to act on it.
I got you.
So, yeah.
Could, could you just give us an idea by the end of the month whether it's, uh, I, I'd sooner to just give it to you, you know, let you do it. I mean, it's, it's a manager's type of a thing to do, uh, but I, I, I'd sooner, I'm, I'm more interested in that green thing going forward when I start looking at the SPPA. Right now, we just need to get our energy taken care of for the next year or whatever, year and a half. And then going forward, I wanna know if, if the difference in that number is.
Sure.
So that it's something if we decide to go with the SPPA or we can do it on our own. So that's kind of more what I'm looking at. Yes, if we can get it now around the same price for green, why not?
All right, thanks. Uh, Bruce, your hand up.
Um, yes, I, well, I think like most of us, I've dealt, uh, I'm dubious about the solar purchase and power agreement with the ability to hit deadlines right now. Uh, I'm in favor of an eighteen-month contract, um, and I would, you know, I just locked in green energy at a lower price than, uh, than the regular service from, from our regular supplier. So I think we should look at green energy, and you know what? If it costs us another penny more, I think we ought to do it. My thoughts.
All right, thank you. I, I agree too. I've been pushing for renewables for a while and, you know, I wanted more than we agreed on for the SPPA contract. So I would, I would like to see a price from green energy and, uh, um, I'd like to go with that if it's reasonable.
So what I'm hearing is eighteen months. If it's a green energy contract in there and you wanna set a limit of no more than one cent higher or a percentage higher than whatever the regular power cost is, that way I don't have to be, it's really difficult to get this at the right timing to get it before you to make a decision.
So you're saying a, a cent higher than that point oh nine five eight six number?
No, a cent higher than what would be quoted under just basic energy cost. So right now, like I said, it was right around seven cents a kilowatt hour. If I get a quote for seven cents for just any type of energy and eight cents for green energy, go with the green energy in that case?
I'd say if you can get it under nine point five eight six for eighteen months and it's green, fine. If, if the other ones, if the other one's significant, two or three cents lower, okay, we would think about it. But if you get one at seven and one at eight, I'm, I'm fine with that. You know, I don't know about the rest of you.
Wiggle the cheapest price you can get for us.
All right, I just wanna make sure.
Get the cheapest green price you can get.
Just making sure I have consensus of what I know I'm going for here.
I mean, I'd like to go green, as I just said, and if, uh, it's only a penny more a kilowatt hour, I'd be willing. I think it'd be worth paying that.
Yeah, I don't think we need to split nickels and dimes here.
No.
Let's see what he can come up with.
Yes. It's why we hired you.
Oh, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just wanna make sure that I understand what you're, what you're looking for.
Do you understand? I'm just asking.
All right. Okay, next, then, uh, we are gonna recess to executive session, and I guess, um, we have to go in the other, other part of the building. Bring your stuff.
Grab your stuff.
These, these, the apartment discussion?
Yes.
Part of it.
Okay, so we need the yellow sheets.
I'm gonna bring that. We'll have Bruce on a separate Zoom call.
Go on the Zoom, please.
CNET, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Drew missed.
While they're, um, at executive session, can you do me a favor? The projector is on that wooden stand.
Yes.
It's blocking everyone's view of Frank.
Yeah. Okay, I'll make sure to move that.
Yeah, I think there was a group that met in there and used the projector and used the stand. So if you move the projector, I can let you know if, if it's working better.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I'd say just move the owl up there for now. Um, and then, I'd probably put it on top of the wooden.
On top of the, oh.
Yeah, like right behind it. Probably the best spot for it. And then you can go over to Frank's spot and see how that's looking. Does that look better?
Yeah, we, um, yeah, I can see her.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for moving that to my attention.
Yeah, I don't know if, if they use the stand every month or not. It, it's working better now. You can at least see Frank's seat, so we'll let it go and see what happens.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Of course. Have a good one. We'll see about that. I thought she was gonna say something about the audio. I was like, there's no, I can't hear him. Cause there's like, this, you came back here, it's like, oh, it's getting better. It says like, help, it was like on and off, and I was like, it's gotta be a Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
Cause it, everything looks good over here.
I'm not sure much of it, actually, I can't really see it. Not sure if there's much of light, it's still.
Not really, no. I mean, unless it's the owl, that's the problem, but. He's wiggles.
I already forgot how to pronounce S S C.
Boggs.
Boggs.
There's a Boggs. I was, I know, right? I was looking over, he was like, oh, come on. Like, come on. Gotta get the ankle moving, it's hurting.
Oh, really?
It's hurting a bit, yeah. You ever seen Kill Bill?
No.
Ah, great movie. But I feel like Uma Thurman in Kill Bill right now. She's gonna like paralyze him all the ways down. She's like, wiggle your toe, it's a movie. It's like, you know, the, you need, do you know any of the memes about Quentin Tarantino and his like foot fetish?
Yeah, I do.
So like, a lot, one of the big things of that is in Kill Bill, one, the way Uma Thurman's trying to like get her character to have like, you know, get her, get out of paralyzation. And she's like, wiggle your big toe. And she keeps wiggling with the big toe.
Oh.
She keeps trying to wiggle the big toe, and it keeps going back to the shot of the foot.
Oh.
And it's just like, oh, come on, man.
He loves it.
He's all holding the, uh, footy toe, you know?
Mm-hmm.
He's ready for it. Should've walked around this way. It has, it has the ramp.
Yeah. Feel like anywhere?
Oh, it feels better. Like, I just have to get it like in motion, get blood going through it.
Yeah.
Cause that's like an area, I found out that this is an area where like not a lot of, like, goes through. So that's why it doesn't heal fast.
Oh, that makes sense.
That's what we meant by the green right there.
Yeah.
It's like, green, I just want to leave it up there. And. Yeah, the rest of the meat does not, it's, it's, yeah. Cause if whatever they express in the exec session is gonna be applied to it. I can feel the blood going through now. It feels great. It feels wonderful. It actually feels really good. It's like when you drink water, when you wake up in the morning, you're like, I need to drink water.
Oh.
Like, you know, when you wake up at like three in the morning, you'd be like, that filter is calling my name right now.
Mm-hmm.
That's how it feels. It feels exactly like that. Goes to the car, you know? Still there. That's what I like to see. You know if there's a bath in here or not?
I would recommend that too. I think it's like if there is, I think it's gonna be.
Hey, I don't know.
Twenty-seven, we're reconvening our meeting. So, next is annual appointment position stipulated by code or ordinance. So, first is the Township Secretary Treasurer.
So.
Move to appoint Mike Bockle as Service Secretary Treasurer of Harris Township for 2024 and setting treasuries bound at $1 million.
I second.
Okay, motion seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Hold on, I got a question first. Oh, aye. Oh, aye, never mind.
You're slow.
Go ahead. I was looking at the wrong thing.
Okay. Assistant Secretary Treasurer, I have a motion for that.
That's a highly sought after position.
Well, you can't do it this year though, can you?
Why?
Because your vice.
You can do it this year, you can't do it that year.
You can't do it.
Okay, then we can keep the same one in, right?
I'm just fine.
Okay.
You need a motion?
I'll make that motion to appoint Dennis as Assistant Secretary Treasurer for this coming year, 2024.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Take it, I count.
All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Next is tax collector.
I make a motion to appoint Bridget Armstrong as Harris Township Tax Collector to fill the unexpired term ending December 31st, 2025.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, thank you, that's unanimous. Professional appointments, we have a township engineer, and so there's a motion on the next page, if anybody'd like to make that.
Move to appoint College Township Engineering Department and Century Engineering to serve as the primary municipal engineer for Harris Township in 2024. And move to appoint McCormick Taylor to serve as Strapping Engineer in 2024. You need a name on that, McCormick Taylor, is this generic?
Just generic's fine. I second that.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous. Sewage enforcement officer is next.
Well, I move to appoint Center Region Code Administration as primary SEO and Stan Wallace as alternate SEO.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Move to appoint the law firm of Finelli Willett and Patrick Finelli to serve as Harris Township Solicitor for 2024, and to appoint Ronald McLaughlin and the law firm of Stover and McLaughlin to serve as alternate Solicitor for 2024.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Next is zoning hearing board solicitors.
Move to appoint Scott Ether and Ether Law Firm as zoning hearing board solicitor, and David Gaines at the law firm of Miller, Kessler, Campbell as alternate zoning hearing board solicitor.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. And Act 511 Tax Collector is next.
I move to appoint Center Tax Agency as the Act 511 Tax Collector for 2024.
Oh, good.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, now we get to annual cog and related committee appointments. So, we actually should have discussed this in exact, I think we have.
No, we don't discuss it.
Well, we've discussed it. Anyway, so, well, I'm obviously going to be on executive committee, and I am willing to keep my human resources and public safety, so.
You want finance back?
I will do finance.
I'll do facilities and land use.
Oh, you're going to do facilities too.
What?
You don't want to put me on climate action and sustainability.
Pardon?
You don't want to put me on climate action and sustainability.
Why not?
It's not my forte.
None of them are my forte.
Finance is my forte.
Everything becomes your forte after all.
What did you prefer?
I guess I was just a little bit concerned about what happened with that letter that went out, and when I talked about the climate action and sustainability, there were a lot of issues that he was talking about that I am completely unfamiliar with. You know, and so I was, that was just something that concerned me.
The main issue right now is the new tenure trash contract, the one that just filed out.
That's...
That's what they're working on now, so.
It's not as bad as you think. You just got to use your...
I mean, I don't know anything about much except for the finance and facilities committees. That's the only ones I know, so then you have to help me with where I would...
What does Bruce see on that?
Park and Rec.
Park Capital or...
I definitely like to be involved in the, I continue to be Parks Capital for as long as it lasts, and the Special Governance Committee. And I'm open to anything else that you see me need to fill in on.
Well, Bruce, let me ask you a question. There will still be like a Parks and Rec Committee, won't there?
Well, there's Park Authority, that's a continuing appointment separate from this.
Okay.
Well, that's interesting. So, we only show Parks Capital and Parks and Recreation Governance Special Committee. We didn't just have a Parks and Rec Committee, didn't we?
I thought we did too.
Did that just go away?
No, Bruce says we did. We don't have that.
There's never been one, to my knowledge, related to my tenure.
Well, why don't you start on that?
There's a Parks and Recreation Authority, but we do not have a current member that's expiring in that, so we weren't notified. It's like our school library representative. We don't need to appoint anybody this year, they're still there.
Okay.
And that's not normally a board member.
That's best date.
And would the MPO one, that's going to be immersion plan commission, what we talked about?
No, the MPO coordinating will be one of the board members and...
The MPO's the one I'll be on.
That's right.
Oh, okay, okay.
Now, I don't know if you're, Tracy, if you're interested in, say, serving on something like public safety instead of me this coming year, that committee's been bounced around here and there for a while, I've served on it.
Do you want to do that one instead?
I don't really think about that either.
That deals basically police, fire, emergency management...
Codes.
Code issues.
You would like that one.
I'd probably like that one.
I mean, I'm willing to let you have that one and get it.
I'll trade you.
What are you trading?
I'll trade you my, I'll trade you my climate action for your public safety.
Well, climate action, when does, has that been meeting?
They meet the second Monday of the month at 12:15.
At 12:15, second Monday?
Yes.
Most of these are daytime meetings, aren't they?
Yeah, I can...
Most of them are. Finance has been early, but...
When's public safety meet?
That's 12:15 on...
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday of the month.
And they could get rearranged based upon convenience of all the members.
They can. Most of the time they stay where they're at, in my experience. But, I mean, if you really don't want to do climate action and sustainability, I'll take it and let you have public safety to get your feet wet.
I, yeah, I really prefer to do that. I'd feel much more comfortable, if that's okay with you.
Would you throw in two quarters and a dime on that, we'll do a swap?
Of course.
Okay. And then down below here, we have, because I don't, I think we got all those taken care of.
Yeah, so...
Now, Spring Creek Water Commission, that's you this year, Danny. That's always the vice chair.
Well, that gets delegated to IGO.
Vice Chair. But he's the, he's the...
He's the alternate.
He's the alternate, but you're the guy.
I'm delegating it to IGO.
Oh, okay.
When you, when you talk to IGO about that, tell them I just delegated it to IGO.
I'm certain he'll appreciate that, I will let him know.
We're going to put him on a different rotating schedule and have him here every two months.
Okay.
Every two months.
Two, three months, what do you say?
Whatever you want.
Okay, every couple months, if we need to, no one's up to.
Okay. So, Bolzberg Harris Museum, from the Harris Township Board, it doesn't have to be from the Harris Township Board, it can be somebody that's not currently...
Well, we could leave Bud on that if he...
Bud said he wanted to stay on.
If he wants to stay on it, he can be our...
Isn't he vice chair of the board?
Something like that, yeah.
So, yeah, he said he'd like to stay on.
Well, that's good. All right, and we have the center area cable consortium.
Does that even meet the...
Doing that.
We need to have an appointee, but they haven't met, I don't think, for a while, so...
We're in active contract now.
Hey, Bruce, you want to do that one?
As I recall, Kenny did, you know, with Sonny.
We're talking about the cable area, center area cable consortium.
Consortium.
I thought Bud did that.
All right.
That's basically inactive, I think.
Okay.
Well, it meets when the contract...
And one more, the solar power purchasing agreement committee, Bud was on that.
You want to do solar power?
You want to do that one?
I'll give it a go.
That's, that's... You can yell on that one.
I can?
Denny, Denny, that wasn't what you were intending?
I've been working on it for four years. It's the kind of thing that...
I'm making sure. I thought you said Bud was on it, that's why I was confused.
He was, well, he was on it, right?
I can't, because Cam will give you the feeling of what's going on with that one right now. It's becoming extremely complicated from legal perspective.
Well, then, why don't you continue it, and how about I just go?
I delegate that to you.
No, you don't, you don't want to go?
I'll put along.
And I'll just, I'll just come?
It could be done in a year.
In other words, you want to go along and with Danny?
Well, if he's, I can't be walking in not knowing what's going on.
It's extremely complicated.
And if it's complicated, then he can go and I can just...
You need to go to one of these meetings.
I'm going, I have been...
No, no, I'm talking about people not knowing what's going on. You don't want to go to some of the meetings.
I have been.
You and I, you and I will...
I'm not talking about you.
You and I will do that.
Okay, I guess.
All right.
Tell Pam that, in fact...
That's not what I said.
Tell Pam that Tracy and myself and Pam will have to meet and go over the interface, because they're putting some educational stuff together, they're doing some videos and things about that, so.
Should we formally have appoint Dennis and Tre... Should we formally have appoint Dennis and Tracy as alternate, or...
Or you just say Dennis, and she's just going to go.
And Tracy's tagged, I'll be the tag along.
We have a policy where we can substitute for each other and have voting power, so...
Sure.
We don't have to appoint formally to anything.
Well, they split between Zoom meetings and personal meetings.
Before we take and have a motion on this, I'd like to verify and write down everything correctly.
Yeah, I was going to, so, um, I will, I will go down, I've been writing the notes, and so I'll go down what I have here. Executive will be me, finance Frank, human resources is me, Parks Capital is Bruce, public safety will be Tracy, facilities will be Dennis. I'm going to take climate action and sustainability. Dennis will be land use. The Lucy Land Use Infrastructure Committee. Bruce will be Parks and Rec Governance Special Committee. MPO will be Frank. And if we get down to the bottom, we have, we're just going to appoint Bob Igo for the Spring Creek Waterside Commission, and Bud will be, continue to be on the Heritage Museum Representative for the Board. Bruce is going to take the Cable Consortium, and Dennis will do the Solar Power Purchasing Agreement.
And COG will put together a spreadsheet of all of these people, all the committees. So, once he wants to see that, it'll make it a little more... How they relate to each other, so.
So, now that I've said that on camera, we all know who's on what.
Yeah.
So, I'd like, how about a motion to approve the slate of committee appointments?
Move to appoint the committee members for 2024 and direct township staff to notify the COG Executive Director that the substitution voting policy shall remain unchanged for 2024.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 I love that slate delay.
I move to appoint Charles Bud Graham to serve as vacancy. Board Chairman, 2024 with the term ending December 31st, 2024.
That way he gets to keep coming to the township dinners.
Well, he would have come anyway.
So, Bud Graham, okay, do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay. All, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, now we get to the planning commission, so...
Move to appoint Phil Becker as regular member of the Planning Commission, to a term ending December 20, December 31st, 2025. And to appoint, someone has to fill in the alternate names of what we did.
Peter Irish and Peggy Johnson.
Okay. As alternate members of the Planning Commission to a term ending December 31st, 2025.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I didn't hear who we're appointing as a regular.
Pete, uh...
Phil Becker.
Phil Becker.
Phil?
Phil, yes.
Phil.
Bump him up from all to regular. Okay, did we have a second yet on that?
You did not.
Uh, second, I'm sorry. Okay, well, Bruce, give it to Bruce.
We'll give Bruce a second.
Yeah, he needs...
We need to give him a chance to second something because of his delay there, so... All right, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Zoning Hearing Board is next.
Move to appoint Ron Friedman to the zoning hearing board to a three-year term ending December 31st, 2026.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Any, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Move to appoint Michael Smith to serve as the Harris Township Leader as on to the State College of Water Authority.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Move to appoint Bill Speakman to serve as Harris Township Senior Representative.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, catching on there. All right, Parks and Rec Advisory Committee.
Move to appoint Ryland Bogus to the Park and Rec Advisory Committee to a term ending December 31st, 2026.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Shade Tree Commission is next.
Move to appoint Greg Waugh to Shade Tree Commission to a five-year term ending December 31st, 2028.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I hear an aye from Bruce.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Center County Metropolitan Planning Organization Technical Committee.
Yeah, so with this one, George Harrigan previously served as the Township's representative, and what you had asked me to do is talk to our Planning Commission about hopefully finding a representative at their meeting next week. So what I'll do is hopefully have someone for you to appoint at your, before the February 14th meeting of the tech committee.
And you're going to follow up with our discussion with that individual that we talked about?
For the Planning Commission? Yes. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. We'll get on next to Center County Tax Collection Committee.
Move to appoint Township Manager Mark Wokel as Representative and Finance Assistant Budget Bridget Armstrong as alternate to the Center County Tax Collection Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, great. Run the gamut. Next, uh, meeting schedule. So, there's a proposed list of meeting dates. Continue on to the next page. Regular meetings, obviously, the second Monday.
Could I ask a question? Is anyone interested in changing it back to a 7:30 meeting?
I wouldn't be interested in changing it back to a 7:30 meeting.
I thought you would.
I would, I would not mind either. I'm, I, it doesn't matter to me, I guess.
I'm, well, you know, my issue is getting up at 5:00.
Oh, okay, you win.
You win.
You win.
I thought you were using traffic laws.
No, that's fixed.
Oh, they fixed it?
Oh, yeah, I complained enough and, and somebody actually looked into it, and there was an issue with it. So, it's working properly now.
Okay.
Just the way it's supposed to.
It's an inconvenience for me to do 7:00.
But, but he wins, he's got the morning shift.
I mean, I start getting woozy if it gets too late, you know?
Not you.
No.
I'll move to approve the meeting schedule as proposed.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? We have any conflict, I assume there's no conflict dates with anything that we're concerned, might be concerned about?
Take all those with federal holidays and state holidays and election days.
We made sure to avoid conflicts, yes.
Okay.
We're here Veterans Day. That's okay, I'm the only one that's a fax.
Aren't we usually here?
Even November 11th.
We're here Columbus Day, too.
I'm not Columbus.
No.
We may need to amend that, if November the 11th, yeah, that's, uh, that is Veterans Day.
I don't, we actually haven't. We've had meetings when the office is closed, but...
Oh, really?
Friends Day holiday, Friday.
Oh, we take it that Friday, that's why.
It's the way the holiday schedule is set up.
So, we take it on the 15th, so there's no conflict with staff being off that day.
Okay.
All right. Well, I'm fine leaving it there if everybody else is. Okay. All right, we've discussed the, uh, meeting dates. Any discussion on that? We already got a motion and a second. We did get a second. We did get a second on that, didn't we?
Who seconded it?
Who seconded that one?
I had, Tracy did.
Tracy did.
Okay, very good. Well, you could speak up.
You have to move me the other side of the room, I can see it now. It's going to get me in trouble.
Okay, well, um, hearing no more discussion, all in favor of approving the meeting schedule, say aye.
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 Thank you, okay. Appointment to delegate to the state convention.
Move to appoint Dennis Haymeister, attending the PSAS convention, Harris Township Delegate for 2024.
Okay, I'll pick a meeting then, too. So, you ever been to, go to a PSAS meeting?
I've never been to one.
It's a learning experience. Three days, three days on.
I've been a supervisor for 30 years and never been to one.
I've been to one.
Bruce has never been to one, so.
I have to take time off work to do it.
Do you want to go to that?
Yeah, let me check the schedule, but I, yeah.
Okay.
You're going to be our rep, though, you're going to go.
The crunch is January 9th.
Yeah, next Tuesday morning is when we have to start.
I just had to check my schedule.
Just let me know by next Monday, that way Tuesday morning we can have...
The January 9th deadline is the crunch, because you want to get into the Hershey Lodge.
No, I see it right here, Frank.
The Hershey Lodge reservation is open up at about 8:00 on January 9th. So, Deb has to make calls real quick to get in.
Very good. So, you will accept the, uh, the delegate?
Okay, Danny's going to be a delegate.
We've had a motion and a second, have we?
We had a motion, did anybody second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, you got a second.
Okay. So, um, any more, any discussion?
You're both going.
Oh, we're both going, okay.
Yeah, he's just a voting delegate, so you can go, and they'll show you now.
Make sure you get that to Amy with respect to game.
The new Amy.
Not Amy, Debbie, to get it into the, into the lodge.
Yeah, I'll try, yeah, I'll try.
All right, well, let's vote on that Dennis appointment there to the delegate. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, now, our next up is Resolution 2402, the fee schedule. Each year the board adopts a fee schedule that lists the amounts charged for various township and other agency services. The changes to the fee schedule are highlighted in yellow in the resolution. They include changes to code agency fees and the sewage enforcement officer fees. Staff intend to conduct a thorough evaluation of the fee schedule in 2024.
Are any of the increases internal to the township or are they all external organizations?
It's all, it's all from the code office that the increases are highlighted. None of them are from us.
That's probably true for the S E O. Isn't that a D E P?
No, the S E O, the S E O rates are set by the code office, which is our S E O currently. They're our primary S E O.
Are D E P set?
No, they're all variable. Their, S E Os have different prices of what they charge. There may be a limit of how much they can charge, but they all have different prices.
Yeah, there was a limit. The stuff on page 5.
All right. Oh, we need a motion and a second.
How drastic are those increases?
Um, they're, like, for rental housing inspection, it was pretty minimal. Same with lodging house inspections. For the S E O and rates, they were probably anywhere from $20 to $40 more on each of these.
But aren't those fees also passed through customer fees?
Yes, they're customary, yeah.
So, there's no...
Yeah, we don't pay any...
There's no financial gain in any of these.
Correct, we don't pay any of these to the code office. They entirely collect it from the customer, and we don't have to pay them. And so this is just establishing how much the code office charges them.
Still waiting for a motion.
Oh, so moved. Oh, I'm sorry, move to adopt Resolution 2402, setting the fee schedule for Harris Township.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, Dennis, second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Bruce. Move on to managers report.
Oh, we got one we added.
Oh, we did, that's correct, so... Where is that piece of paper now?
I have it extra here if you need it.
Yeah, I have it, I found it. So, the, um, this item is a change order for the parking lot project, just extending the original contract time and also, um, finalizing the payment date. Those are only two things, right?
Correct.
So, so we're going for, um... Nothing else has changed.
You need a motion on that?
Yeah, I would just like, yeah, a motion to approve the change order. In that way I can execute it on half the township.
Is there a number?
Yeah, what?
I make a motion that we, we approve change order.
You call it change order.
Number owner's project number 2304, from 85 days ready for final payment to 300 days final payment.
I second.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, that's unanimous.
I mentioned to Mark before the meeting that we need to keep pounding on this thing and get some action on the parking lot with respect to what was promised, and get this code issue straightened out with respect to it. It's something that we should not be running into.
Yes, we need to pound that pavement.
This is not an issue that falls on the township's shoulders. It should be the engineer and the electrical contractor and Bowman, and they can't work that out. We've been playing this game long enough with them. And you know what they're going to give us, filling in the trenches so we can plow the snow in the wintertime? Well, it's winter, the trenches haven't been filled, and if the contract, if the electrical contractor comes in next week and wants to do all the work, we tear the whole thing out again. The coordination of this thing is miserable.
Yeah. We've already got the quote and what we're paying, whatever they work out.
Well...
Hopefully, yeah.
As part of the, this extension, I will make sure that it's clear to them that we expect this to be done within the next couple of days to have that cold batched, at least.
Aren't they delaying until spring to finish the project?
I imagine so at this point. I think they had hoped to start working on doing concrete pouring, but I don't know that they're even going to do that at this point, if they're just going to wait till spring because they're still having the permits.
Then we need to talk to Mr. Finelli with respect to a lot of it from him to Bowman and tell them, discuss what's going on.
Possibility of significant snow this weekend, so...
Yeah, we're going nowhere.
All right. Next, managers report. All right. Uh, next, manager's report. So first, Mark, is there anything you'd like to highlight on the manager's report?
Um, just some good news on here. Our insurance coverage for twenty twenty four actually is going to be less than twenty twenty three, which is quite a surprise because we saved some money with a different cybersecurity provider. Uh, so that's some good news. Also, we're going to be getting more money from the state for all of the state forest lands that we have. Uh, it's going to be going up from, um, I think it's a two dollars to two dollars and forty cents an acre. So we'll end up with, uh, about an extra five thousand dollars in revenue from the state this year. Uh, otherwise, um, yeah, I think everything else in the manager's report, if you have any questions, by all means, be happy to answer.
Just not, number one, I got all those emails. Do we finally get the right form to the right people?
I, well, yes, as far as I know, PennDOT sent me the form, I signed it. And then they said that was the wrong form we sent you. Sign it again. So hopefully the second one they sent was the right one. We're, we're waiting for that additional money from PennDOT.
What's going to be the total reimbursement on that, uh?
It'll be five hundred and three thousand and some change. I can't remember exactly how much.
What was total buildup?
It was five hundred and three. We're getting all of it back.
Oh, really? Okay.
We'll be getting a hundred percent reimbursement, which is pretty rare for a municipality to be able to build a bridge for no cost in the end.
Well, we didn't build a bridge.
Well, a culprit.
We lied to.
It qualifies as a bridge according to the.
I, I, we have to remember that program.
Yeah.
Because that was one that, uh, they, they gave to us, you know, I think Zella started this.
Retroactive reimbursement program. It's very, very good.
Okay, any, uh, any other questions for Mark on the manager's report? All right, next, approval of vouchers. Um, I entertain a motion to approve voucher transmital sheet twenty twenty three dash twelve.
So move at the value of four hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-one cents.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Um, any?
I may have checked one.
Any discussion, uh?
It was long in here, I thought it was sort of.
Any question on the late fee? What did we get a twenty-five dollar late fee for? That's down here at the First National. I assume it's a credit card.
Yeah, I think that was something we were going to be trying to dispute. I'll have to check with, uh, Bridget on that. Which, which page is that on?
It's on, uh, the next to the last page, next to the last, that very bottom one, last, last item.
Yeah, I'll need to check with her. I think that was something that she was challenging why we got a late fee on that.
Well, because right under it, it says finance charge credit. We got a forty-nine dollars.
And that may be what the resolution was. We, we are looking for another, um, credit card. We're trying to go through, uh, Co-Stars to get another one, but it's been a very slow process to get one.
Go to Jersey Shore, that's where we're, that's where our money was.
It is. What we're trying to do is get, we have to check with Jersey Shore to see whether or not they can give us a card that will be to the township and not to an individual. A lot of banks want it to be to a person, so it would be my name on the card with Harris Township at the bottom. Whereas our current card is just a Harris Township, so anybody can use it on behalf of the township that's an employee.
Check with Bridget, they have a card.
We can check with Bridget, too. Okay.
The, I was sort of, the same point, First National Bank, Zoom, Network Solutions and Total Wireless. What's our relationship to First National Bank and those three pays?
Those were the three charges that were on our credit card. So we charged.
We had a Zoom charge of fifty-nine dollars.
Zoom charge, Network Solutions is our, uh, website registration and Total Wireless is a cell plan.
So we're putting those three items on a credit card. It looks like, yeah, I'm guessing with the late fee and the finance charge credit, there was probably interest charged for something strange.
Yeah.
For some, somebody made a mistake.
I can check into that and find out why it's, what's going on with it.
At least, well, the credit's a lot more than the late fee, so it looks like it may have been resolved, anyway. Okay, well, we did have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the vouchers? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, okay. Uh, committee reports. This should be fast. Executive Committee, Frank.
The, the only thing I, 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 you know, we didn't, we met with, we got the executive directors.
Sounds like, uh, evaluation.
Evaluation done, so that, that was done and finally put to bed, but that happened late in the month. So that was the only thing that's happened that you guys weren't aware of. Other than that, and all my other committees did not meet.
Okay, um, Bruce, anything to do with parks? Bruce?
Yeah, no, those committees, thanks.
Okay, I didn't, I thought that was likely. Um, public safety and human resources did not meet. So next would be Dennis's committees.
Land use and solar power did not meet.
Okay, and, um.
Neither of those last two.
Um, yeah, so, that's it, the committee report, so I entertain a motion for the number nine item on the agenda.
I move your turn.
All second and we're out of here.
Thanks.